Areas and event areas is a good idea because we've had like the oyster restoration project, we had, there were tents there, but it is limited of what you could do. I think it has potential.
This was one of two that I was gonna recommend go to the veterans wall, but I can see I'm gonna be a minority on this. Thank you.
Just to address the, that was the first tree, and just as someone that's there all the time, you know, during season, you know, how this all kinda started was we said, you know, you come here to the city hall and it's absolutely gorgeous, then you go to Lashley Park, which is really one of the focal points of Punta Gorda. It should be our diamond, you know, we have our park, we're gonna have the memorial. And some of the plants, which we have addressed in different areas, like the crepe myrtles, or frangipani, for lack of a better word, when everyone's here, you can't get an uglier bush. There's not a leaf on it. And so, in the proposal we made, all those frangipanis, our crepe myrtles would be removed and replaced with royal palms, because lease maintenance, self-cleaning, things like that.
Well, I think the details can be worked out, too. Is, do you like the concept of repurposing that area and possibly, because people that do rent the community room, there is an opportunity for them to have additional activity outdoors with tents or what have you, even, you know, if they wanna take a chance without the tents, but I think it's, it has potential. Kim?
I just wanted to make a comment about the royal palms. If you're gonna be having events there and stuff, as they grow in the, in the fronds fall, that can be a danger also. I mean, they get quite heavy. Just to keep that in mind.
Not being a landscaping type, but wouldn't you wanna have something there that generates shade?
That could be a consideration, too. I'm sure the Marina Park and the city staff can come up with a design. Would, would we do it in-house, Howard, or what would we have to?
No, we would, we would, if you want this project to be further explored, we would look at it in-house.
Okay. I think it has merit, this, this one.
Yeah, I agree with you, because I think that they can really use it, and that anything we can do to enhance that there, I think that's our job.
My question, I think, would be, can we do anything with those crepe myrtles? They would look very sick. I mean, is, if they are moved, I mean, would they survive?
In the plan that we had, with the bids, and we had several, it was really not to, you know, hear vote on this, it was just, this is kinda what it's gonna cost. If you, and we did it kind of à la carte on everything, so you could see all the, the trees that are there, except for the ones that are actual dying, there's one royal palm and a couple of things that are, that are dying, we're gonna be repurposed on the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure that we, we have an arborist on staff, and I'm sure that our chief planner, arborist, would probably be able to give us some good advice as to where those probably could go.
Okay, so I think we have consensus that we like the repurposing of the area, the devil in the details to come later.
Okay.
And the dollar amount.
Number three, repurpose the old bathrooms, which are at the fishing pier, basically closed, because we have bathrooms at the interactive fountain, we have bathrooms at the Marina building, and turn that into a storage area. And the idea was to take the golf cart, store it in there, as well as some other items.
And I believe, Mr. Kavanaugh, you were buy yesterday?
Yeah, I did stop by.
And, this is one of those things, when you look at the price tag, the price tag is a very wide-ranging price tag, and this is, we went from closing in a certain area to completely, you know, fixing the roof, matching everything, repainting it to match the other buildings. So when you see that price tag, you're like, four walls. But, one of the big problems that the staff has is storage, and, because their room, which is actually getting smaller now, there is no place to keep a blower, a rake. The stuff that they use for emergency stuff in the Marina for cleaning up spills, it's all stored upstairs in the attic. So, I don't know if you've been in there, but it's a staircase like this, and so now they have, like, a rope, they lower things down. That area, when you look at it, we would like to take the doors off the bathrooms, and then put walls all the way around with a big door in the front. It will still leave an eight-foot wide walkway through to the fishing pier, so it won't affect the operation of the fishing pier at all, and we can store everything there. It'll also be a little workroom for the, the staff to do the projects that they're now doing at, at the Marina. And the issues that we've come up with are basically code issues, trying to work around finding a way not to have to put footers in, and we looked at more of a, an elite panel type of system that they're using for sound walls on the highway, that it's a much cheaper way to go, but it looks, you know, like it's a solid wall, so.
Chris, I, I wouldn't have any problem with, with the additional storage. I think the cost of that storage is a little bit high, but I think that when you sit down with staff, something can be worked out about that. My, my issue or concern was moving the golf cart, which is something I think the Marina personnel, when they're behind the counter, they just wanna get out and hop on a golf cart and go do what they need to do with it. Seems like a, an expedient, you know, an expedient place to have that golf cart.
It's, not, it's more about storage in the, at night for the golf cart, where it's got its little bed to go home to, kinda like a dog crate. You know, during the day, it's not typically sitting in one place for more than 10 minutes. I mean, they're, they're using it constantly, and so, it's not protected at night. You know, if someone walks up there, they can literally just pop it up and take the batteries with anything else that's left outside unmanned.
Okay.
I think that this would be an appropriate use of our CRA funds.
I would agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I do.
Are you gonna keep water in there?
Excuse me?
Are you going to keep water in there?
In the plan that we have, one of the bathrooms is gonna be, everything's gonna be taken out, and in the other bathroom, they're gonna leave a sink, but they're gonna put in what you would call laundry tub.
Right, good.
Yeah.
Because that is just, you know, that is also the pump-out station, so a lot of that material can be kept in there, but no hazardous material. There'll be possibly a five-gallon gas can, you know, as far as...
Excuse me, while we're talking about the golf cart, the area where it currently is, the concrete underneath it has gotten pretty damaged. I mean, I'm sure you, you could find something to put underneath it when, when you, when you store it during the day.
Yes, sir. We, we will address that.
Yeah, this would also secure the equipment.
Yes.
All of the equipment.
That's right.
And, more equipment is needed for maintenance of the Marina.
Okay.
Repaint the mural, the mural, repaint the Marina. We don't repaint murals.
Don't start that.
We don't repaint murals. We know of one business owner that did, but we don't do that. Repaint the Marina building. It's fading. I don't know if it needs to be done right away, but your call.
I looked at the building, and I walked around it, and I thought, well, it didn't really look, to me, like it really needed something. I don't, I'm just wondering, what did I miss?
You may not have missed anything.
I think we could just let that go.
It's on the list.
Yeah.
I came to a similar conclusion.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, wouldn't it be on maybe the schedule the same as the Crab House, so all paint always looks a little better?
We are getting...
No, it, it's not on a Crab House schedule.
I know, but it's the same, it matches, so if you were on the same schedule as...
And with the storage facility as well, part of it was to, you know, when you look at the roof, it's, it was actually never fixed after the hurricane, so there's still some metal that's popped up. It's the, the green roof, and part of that big number was to actually repaint that building, redo the roof to match the other buildings. And, for the Crab House, it, it is actually time. You know, one of the things we are looking at doing is painting, and we were looking to kind of do it as a uniform thing, not that the city's has to paint at the same time that the Crab House does, but typically on a commercial building, you're gonna get, you know, six years before you get to, to repaint it, especially when you use the pastel colors. They don't last like a white, or, you know, another color.
Well, once, I was just concerned that once that is painted, that room, that building will start to look a little bit more shabby. That's just what happens.
A good point.
If you come across 41 and look at it, you'll see, it's ready for a sprucing, but that, to me, is, is spending the city's money. I don't know that that's a, I'd rather see some of the other things before I paint the building, but...
And, and some of this could be programmed for next year's
Right.
Maintenance budget, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think it'd be a good idea to work with Marina Park to coordinate it, so that it does have a similar appearance.
Just let us know when the Crab House...
All of these were really just discussions that we had with the city on, you know, when we started, when we started doing business with y'all, you know, the Marina was new. There was no boats there. We didn't have a mooring field, we didn't have a pump-out boat, we didn't have the extra day docks, we didn't have livable boards. It was empty. You know, now we're full, and we have all these things, and we were, you know, you know, city has purse strings, and we like to get as much as we can from them. This is how these discussions came about, and also came about, when you pull up to Lashley Park, it's not that pretty, you know, and, you know, we as Marina Park are trying to, you know, find ways to, to beautify it, and by painting it, by making the storage facility look the same, by getting the golf cart out of there, you know, and a lot of other things that we have on this list, obviously, is really the reason we're here.
Okay, so, the next one is the concrete stairs.
Concrete stairs from the boat ramp up to the Marina building. Right now, you have to walk all the way around. We see, staff sees this project, nice project. If we, if we get the sales tax monies and puts in the harbor walk behind the Crab House and the Marina building, we may be able to coordinate something in with that, but we don't see this as a high priority.
Couldn't the next one also be incorporated into that?
We haven't gotten to that one yet.
I would agree with that thought process, that this could be a part of the, when we put the harbor walk in.
Yes.
I agree, and a few more steps.
I think it needs to be postponed.
Exercise is good.
Because it would really tie into the walkway as well, yeah.
I mean, it's a matter of prioritization, so it's...
That was the second one I was gonna say, go to Vietnam.
So that's on hold, correct?
Do you want to say anything?
I, I mean, I'll, I'll comment on it, I mean, you know, if it's, something is to be tied in, you know, in two years for the harbor walk, yes, but, you know, Howard was kind enough to come over and, and walk around with us, and it doesn't matter whether you have a sidewalk there right now or not, there is a ditch from where you have hundreds of people walk behind that building every day. It is, I don't know that there's grass that is, you know, in fear of its life, more than behind that building from the, the people walking. And, for the people that are using, and I understand there's gonna be a ship store that's going in there, and Marina Park is excited for them, but if they're gonna have a chance of succeeding, those stairs are gonna be the best opportunity for them to succeed, because people inherently are lazy, and, you know, when you wanna get something, if you have to walk around and do all that, and, you know, you don't wanna send your child walking that far to get to somewhere, this would really make it much easier, even for the Marina staff, that does a lot of help with the people, you know, to get direct access to that boat ramp. You know, whether you do it now or two years, you're gonna do it.
Right.
If you wanna catch a fish, you need a shrimp.
Oh, I don't disagree that this isn't necessary. It's just, you know, looking at the amount of money that's available, we have to prioritize, we can't do it all.
And it's more of a capital need than a, than an improved, uh, maintenance improvement.
Yeah, this is like, what, seventy-seven thousand dollars, and we only have thirty? I mean, it's like...
That's right.
All these numbers that you see are extremely high, because they all include...
No, I know.
Don't concentrate on it.
I know, I know, I'm not. I'm just saying that, I mean...
These are, these are just ballpark figures, so we have an idea.
Yeah, and I know it's way high. I mean, I got that.
And just, while it's on top of my mind, when you're talking about painting the building, and you, you said the mural, the murals, I don't know who's in charge of the murals, but someone really needs to go inspect them, because right there where the stairs are proposed, and we put them, you know, on the side so we didn't mess up the mural, the stucco has come off the building, and you've got about a three-foot section that, literally in the next year, is gonna hit the floor. So I don't know anything about murals, but if that doesn't get addressed, you're gonna have a problem there, and I think I showed you pictures of that.
The stucco came off the building, but is that the mural people?
It separates.
Or is that, is that the building?
The mural society is responsible for maintaining the murals.
Okay. But did they put the stucco on there?
Yeah.
I mean, did they build the wall?
No, they didn't build the wall. They put the mural on the wall.
I mean, that's kind of a fairly new project for the stucco to be falling off the walls.
Yeah, I'd say so. That didn't make sense.
It, it's something, I mean, I have a picture on my cellphone, but it's something, just, you should be aware of and look at, because that is really beautiful. In the moment that you have a two-foot section missing, it's no longer beautiful.
Again, the mural society is responsible for maintaining the wall.
Well, the city needs to go take a look at that.
In September, the mural society will be bringing to you a proposal regarding the first city council mural, and some issues with that.
Right. I guess I'm just saying that, I mean, how old is that? How old is that building?
Seven years.
Seven, I mean, can it two thousand?
It happens. There's a leak in the window. It happens.
Okay.
Okay, so we're holding off on number five. Number six, right now, lawn and landscaping services are done on a basic, minimal core level. The proposal here is to step it up, to do more of the enhanced landscaping and maintenance, all around the Marina, the mangroves, getting in the mangroves, cleaning them out. We do the minimal work, the minimal level of service right now. So the proposal is to beef it up at some particular level. We, we haven't defined yet what. We wanna know if the CRA feels that the current level of service is acceptable. If it is, we take this item off the list.
I think there's confusion about who's responsible for what over there in some places, like the roundabout, the interior circular piece. I mean, that's, that's been looking terrible for a while. Is that the city's responsibility?
No, that is Marina management.
Well, then we both need to really look at the services that we're providing there, because it does look...
It's a budgetary thing. We actually have a plan for that, is, as well, in there, and other plans. Directly, we can go down the whole list. With the number that we gave him, he'll tell you, it is à la carte, and we were trying to find a way to minimize that, as well as when I talked about taking, you know, getting certain things. We're not looking to buy a lawnmower. We're not, you know. But, we are looking to increase, you know, we do all the pressure spraying of all the docks, you know, in different areas. We maintain all these things. You know, we do wanna get a blower, a better pressure sprayer, a trimmer. We just went and trimmed, we had our staff from Marina Park do all the trees in the parking lot. They wanted to do that, a landscape company, we're all in business to make money, but they wanted a couple thousand dollars to trim the trees up. You know, I think it cost us 600, you know. So, it, as we go forward, we're trying to find that nice line where our staff can, can do things to improve it. And for instance, the, the island that you're talking about, that should be literally the big diamond, the centerpiece. When you pull down Nesbit, that's what you see, you know, and so, yes, this big pink building is, is sitting there, and the park is there, but that's right in front of you. And immediately, what we wanted to do with that would be, pull everything out and just plant grass, because grass looks a heck of a lot better than what's there. And what we were proposing, we wanted you guys to look at, is possibly doing a neat statue for, for the hurricane, something large that would be a centerpiece that people could come take pictures of, and do it as some kind of festival fundraiser, you know, look at ways to fund that, because that's what that area, it should have a really nice statue. I'm not, I do not want a fountain, because fountain is liability, maintenance, you know, but a statue, you know, the right one, could be really neat there. And, you know, that's what that area needs, you know. And we wanted to take those bushes and reappropriate them into some of the other hedges that don't have irrigation, that we're now running irrigation lines to.
Kim?
Carolyn was first.
Carolyn.
My concern with regards to the landscaping would be the mangroves. I mean, a lot of times, things, you know, from the water float in there in terms of trash, and I would hopefully, I would hope that there would not be trash within the mangroves, and I think that's where we need to have, make sure. I don't know about the other areas in terms of the trimming, but seeing trash in the mangroves is, would really be awful.
I don't know if you've walked down there, but the staff actually goes down there daily, and he's here talking about that, and pulls things out of the mangroves. I mean, I brought him today to kinda, if you would like, he can tell you kinda what their day is, because I don't think anyone really realizes the scope that our staff does for the Marina, that we weren't doing when we, when we started. I mean, just things that, you know, when we agreed in, with budget, and things we did, we didn't have all these extra docks, we didn't have, you know, the, the harbor walk that goes out, we didn't have the mooring fields, we didn't have the pump-out boat, you know, there weren't events in the park. And when you have an event in the park, well, that generates trash all over our Marina. You know, we didn't have an interactive fountain that generates, you know, foot traffic and things, and so, when we sat down with city staff, and that's why we're here, we're kinda like, what we were then, we're no longer, and we gotta kinda get together and recognize that, and say, okay, we need to spend money to make this place look good, and effectively, and cost-effectively, instead of just saying, let's call, you know, these guys and come in and give us a Rolls-Royce. We wanna do it over the next five years. We're not asking for all this today.
I think some le, increased level of service is appropriate. I don't know what, but, yes.
I think that, that this portion, that whole area, when you're driving down Nesbit to the park, obviously, it will grow, it will evolve, it needs to evolve. I think there needs to be a, you know, five-year budget of how that evolution is gonna happen. I did wanna make a comment about the trees. You know, sometimes trimming trees need to be done by people who know how to trim trees. I mean, I'm not saying your people didn't, but sometimes paint, you know, 600 as opposed to 2,000, sometimes you can do damage to trees. Not that you did, I'm just saying...
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying.
And I know we have Joan, so she would be, you know, I just think getting together in this process, because even going to where the Vietnam Wall is gonna be, it's pretty shabby over there. I mean, I think we need to look at that whole Nesbit. It is a beautiful, beautiful place, and it needs to have a long-term plan for both the maintenance, and when you add, like you say, you're doing a whole lot more than you were in the beginning. If you add all, if you just add, without a plan, add all kinds of maintenance, now you are adding all...
That's why we're here.
...more services and that type of thing. So I think we need a budget and a plan.
I agree with the budget, because it says a continuing plan. Ten years, you're talking up a quarter of a million dollars at this estimate here. That's a lot of money.
And I would think that actual landscape improvements could be done in conjunction with the har, with the piece behind the Crab House buil, building, to phase that in with the 1%. If we get the 1% and we do the sidewalk behind, additional landscaping could be included into that project, without, I mean, saying separate from increased maintenance at this point.
What about considering some level of increased maintenance?
Some level, I think it's appropriate.
I need to know whether we need to take a look at that or not.
And the plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
Statue, no statue? You know, we talked about the statue when we were considering a monument for the fallen police, and there was some issue with the fire trucks getting around, so I don't know if, if a statue or a monument, whatever worked in that, in that area, but...
I know they haven't abandoned the idea.
Sorry?
But, I, I know that Bill Dryberg has not abandoned the idea of doing something. We've talked with him about different possibilities for locations, but...
There was the idea, just, so you know, and the reason we wanted to just take everything out of there right now is because it doesn't matter how much you prune or weed that, it's, there's one random, you know, tree that only looks good during the summer, and a bunch of shrubs. We can actually reappropriate those. And like, when you talk about, you know, adding that landscaping in, you know, when you look at the, the parking lot, the city parking lot there, you know, there, there's a hedge that's supposed to be, be there, but the foot traffic, you can't keep people walking through it. It never had irrigation, there was never thing, never anything in the budget for fertilizer, you know. So there's no irrigation, there's no fertilizer, and these poor plants are trying to hold on. Those are the kinda things, you know, we're talking about. We have, where there was drip lines, where we can run little drips off that, what we wanna do is take those and fill them in now, so that by season, they're established. In the different planners, a few months ago, we went ahead and replanted those, cut the trees up and replanted them with boguminia. And, you know, everyone's like, well, why did you use that? And I said, 'cause it has thorns. You know, they're not going to walk through an area. You learn that lesson once. You know, don't pick up a hot pot. And we're not trying to hurt people, you know, but it also grows very well, it doesn't need a lot of water, it doesn't need a lot of, of fertilizer, and it can become a beautiful hedge. And so, we want to, you know, fill in those places that, you know, which are cheap ideas to do. You know, we're not looking at, you know, having a landscaper come in and change things. We just wanna reappropriate and add a few things.
Carolyn?
I think it's wonderful that we have approximately $32,000 now in the CRA. It, we're not sure what's gonna happen in the future with regards to those funds, but I would think, as Kim suggested, I think that we should have a plan in terms of maintenance, which would include looking at all of the flora and fauna and trees and things like that within that area. Obviously, there's gonna be ongoing maintenance. I think, again, she suggested, I think a plan is necessary, and while we would love to take some of this money perhaps for the Vietnam Wall, at this point in time, I think it's our responsibility to our taxpayers to make sure that we're taking care of the things that we need to take care of first. And then if there's something left over, then we could perhaps, again, look at that. I think that we will be providing not only the $10,000 In-kind costs. At this point in time, I mean, that's what we've already provided, but we're gonna have ongoing in-kind maintenance costs for the Vietnam Wall. Very much appreciate Mr. Goff's contribution to, again, the development of that wall, but there will be ongoing maintenance, and we need to keep that in mind as we move forward as well.
Because that whole area needs to be beautiful, to bring people there, not just the wall. I mean, it really needs to be a beautiful lush area.
Jane?
I, I don't think that any of us wanna be embarrassed either. And if we put the, and I'm sure we will get the Vietnam Wall, I wanna be some, bring people in from everywhere and be very proud of it. And we're not gonna be proud of it if it's not taken care of. And if it's just grass, that's okay, but I think we do have the plants, and I'm one of those that do walk through there, and so, I would hesitate going through in boguminia. But we do, we do need to take care of what you have there, and it does need water and fertilizer and trimming, but I think our responsibility is what you have done here. And I think our in-kind work will do it, and I would encourage everyone to donate to the Vietnam.
What I would say is, what we were trying to get to and will do with Howard is, you know, when you have a, a landscape company giving bills, we were trying to say, okay, we want you guys to mow, we want you to use the edger, but we can have our guys use trimmers, blowers, do the weeding, do the fertilizing, instead of, you know, outsourcing that and charging on top of that, and charging, you know. It, it makes a way for us at the Marina to, to supply more services, hire more guys to do more things, 'cause we, in our opinion, we're, we're understaffed, and this is a good way, 'cause you don't have to weed all day long. You know, it's able to go out, and that same person can do a pump-out, so they do multiple, multiple things. And when you talk about the, the Vietnam Wall, I don't think there's anything more important, and I'm not putting in the same category, but when you look at what the free bike rentals have done for Punta Gorda, I look at the Vietnam, sense the same thing. They do, the Vietnam Wall will bring a lot of dollars to Punta Gorda. The bikes, believe it or not, bring a lot of dollars to Punta Gorda. You, there, there are things that you, you spend money on and you don't see that, that return. There's not a piggy bank sitting there, you know, saying, okay, you got a bike, but the tens of thousands of people that would come to spend time at that wall, like, I honestly, I have friends from Sarasota that used to come visit, now they come with their families to borrow the bikes, you know. I'm like, so, it, it's amazing what little things that you don't get paid back for. The restaurants, the, you know, the hotels, you know, all the other, the gift shops, they're the ones that get the money back for the Vietnam Wall and the bike rental. So, you know, I would say, you should find whatever way to fund that, 'cause it's important for many reasons.
Let's get through this list, and then
Sorry.
We can talk about the wall some more, so we have two more items. We have the mooring field.
The last two, the last two items, we feel we need to step up the, well, we need to start doing some floating dock maintenance, and then step up the mooring field maintenance. Those can come directly out of the Marina budget. They're not dealing with the CRA budget per se, so...
Howard, are we bound to keep all of those balls out there by a permit?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
So, in essence, we're bound to maintain all of those balls that are out.
We can't sell them.
We can't sell them, we can't downsize in any way.
Answer.
Okay.
I have a question.
Tom?
I have a question.
Okay, Tom.
I looked through the design, well, the drawings for the floating dock system maintenance. I did not see an engineer's stamp on those drawings. And I did see reference to galvanized steel and bolts and so on like that. I don't think that that would be appropriate for a dock system. I think we got to be thinking about stainless bits and pieces, and also with engineer's approval on the methodology.
I have no idea about how any of that works. But he does, and he's the one that deals with it every day, and that's one of the reasons he's here. I don't know what it takes to maintain those balls, and I don't know what it takes to maintain those docks. But listening to the staff, and, you know, they do it every day with the scraping, and these are floating docks, you can talk about, apparently, they need to be tightened once a year, but my pay grade is way down here. So if you have questions about what it takes and what they're doing, he would be the person to answer.
Come to the podium and state your name for us, please.
Good morning. My name is Ray Bernicki. I'm an employee at the marina, and it's nice to address both the council and the visitors. Directly related to the floating dock area, we've had divers come in in this last week and evaluate just to what extent they're going to have to. And with floating docks, as you get larger boats on the floating docks, and there's more activity through the water, and the reason they're floating is they'll adjust with the tide, sometimes they get out of square. So, they're going to go through the marina, spend about four days underwater, adjusting the docks to get them on square. Some of our customers at the marina are going to have to remove their dock boxes so that they can assist and make it easier for the divers to get to. It's not a massive thing, it's just you can tell when they're out of square, because the dock box plate, which is on a diagonal, is either higher or lower. So they're going to just square that so no one slips, and the docks are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, that's something that's not required often. I'm not sure, begin or a year, I have not been privy to it having been done, but it's not something that has to be done every three months, every three months. So I think the cost will probably definitely be beneficial as far as maintaining the system that we have today. Same with the mooring balls. We just, in the last two months, went out with our smaller boat, Amakel, city-owned, and we pulled up each and every mooring ball. And the problem with them is they were weighted down with barnacles, with, just, it was a mess. So each one had to be individually pulled up by two persons, and then they scraped everything down, put it back in. And I think now, the divers who are doing the docks are, we're discussing having them go down and test the structural part of it and make sure that they're anchored properly. Because we can keep up to a fifty-foot boat out there, and they want to make sure they can hold the thirty thousand pounds or whatever the weight limit for that boat is. So, it's, again, the mooring balls are here, it's just a matter of maintaining them. And it's not something that maybe once a year that has to be done. But I don't know that it's been done in the year that I've been there, so. Maybe there's less of a requirement, but there should be a requirement to do that, to limit any liability from a ball that would break away.
I think the maintenance needs to be done.
Yep.
The mooring field, we go out, just to give you an idea, we want to get every ball every month. And just having them all brought up, that's something that the marina has experienced growing pains in the last year. Just in my short tenure with them, we didn't have liverboards. We have ten. Ten liverboards require much more maintenance. Just on a day-to-day, as we go down the docks, you're picking up more trash, and it's just not a trip. And then we're hosing down the docks every day to relieve it of the pelican waste. And there's more things that we do on a daily basis, but the added traffic just compounds that number more and more. We now have people living on boats that are handicapped. We in turn offer many services. We bring their mail down to them, which we take in at the marina seven days a week. We bring packages for UPS, FedEx, postal service. It's easier for us to go down there with our cart and them try and use a hand cart when we know they're not physically able. There'll, with several people that need ice, every third day, by twelve o'clock, we bring ice down. And now we're cashiers as well. So, we have to go to the office and make sure we have the proper change, because we know Ray's going to give us a twenty, or he's going to give us even change. There are just numerous things that we do. And then the traffic, because of the success of the ice program, out of every two people that come in to take a bike out, one of them is going to use the public restroom. It constantly requires not just a morning and an afternoon, once an hour, you're going in there and you're picking up pieces of paper, and you're making the, cleaning the mirrors. Same with our day room. People that live there, we now have ten liverboards, they don't want to use their own facilities, they want to use ours. And they do that. And in turn, it requires, you know, numerous trips to that room, as well as the pump-out boat. It goes out right now, two days a week, it goes out for, from ten to two. And then they come back in, and then we pump out the boats within the marina. So that's a six-hour day twice a week, with I believe plans to extend the use of the boat in other areas out there off the harbor. Things are just increasing to the point where it's a good thing. It's a good problem to have. If everybody came in today, and today was November first, there'd be fifteen boats that we'd have to turn away. That's the position we're in. So, it's a good problem to have.
Put them on the mooring balls.
Thank you, Ray.
I'm sorry?
Put them on the mooring balls.
Well, the mooring balls are tricky in that the bridge limits the sailboats that can come under.
Of course.
So, if, once we do that, there's programs in place, incentives in place, to where we can start offering more things to those. And with the pump-out boat, that's the biggest problem for a sailboat. They don't want to have to untie and come in, or they don't have to. That's our first stop as we go out on Mondays and Thursdays. So, that in itself is beneficial. And the fact that it's cost-free is great. We now have a dinghy dock. That's a requirement to service our people in the mooring balls. They want to know, where can I keep my dinghy? Before, we had nothing. Or we'd tell them, go down by the fishing pier and leave it unattended overnight. They didn't like that. Now they're up front. So, there's a lot of things that we do that, in the course of a day, it's just a minimum four hours, just to run around empty trash cans, blow leaves from corners of curbs, pick up wrappers from the crab house where customers, as good as they are, they'll just drop a to-go cup, or, you know, you'll find diapers, you'll find, you name it. It has to be done. We pick up palm fronds, I could write a book on the things we find. And it's just things that have to happen. And on the tree trimming, we're not professionals, but we're, we've been instructed that these particular trees, the grape trees, as you trim them up, no longer grow low, they'll, they'll become fuller. And that's what we did. So we use my height. We're out there, and we got a nice power saw, and with things like that, we're able to maintain them, keep them neat, prune them. And again, we're not in that business, but we certainly know how to trim hedge bushes and blow off the sidewalk, pick up trash. And constantly, mulch is overrunning the flower area it's in, so we use the blowers. We get it back where it goes. And rather than wait for the landscaper to come, once a week, every ten days, depending on the season, that's what we do. And there's four part-timers and our dock master, Rusty Heeks, who, he has so much love for that marina.
Yes, he does.
He keeps us all going, because he wants it to look as good as possible. And so we contribute that to him, and then the managing partner in Chris.
And we certainly thank you all for your dedication to the marina, trying to keep it nice. I would like to see that we do the immediate needs, like the maintenance, the repair of the water, side window. But I would also request that we do go to the county and ask for some kind of donation to the Vietnam Wall for this year, seeing as that they're on the cusp of garnering enough funds to purchase the granite. I don't know.
Don't we have to go ahead and figure out how much this is going to cost that we really need first?
Yes.
Then we go ahead and figure out, and then you take it to the county commission.
I just want to say, everything that he just said is the budget. You know, everything that you're talking about, from the people that are working there, from the things that have to be done, the docks, the repair, the balls, everything, I mean, that is a budget. We need to have a budget. I mean, for me, it just seems so, I don't know, weird to do things like this, like it comes up, okay, well, we want to do this and that. And we know that there's going to be a hundred other things. I mean, if you manage a property like that, there's all these things. We need to have a budget. And a, and a maintenance, a preventative maintenance and a maintenance. Every year, the parking lot, you know, how many years it needs to be resurfaced, it needs to be painted, the roof, the things that need, you know, when you have a property, you know these things are going to happen. So, I mean, I just would love to have a budget, not to-
Well, I think we do have a maintenance budget, we do. And I think the little bit of a rub is that there's a marina park over here, and there's a city over here, and it's like, where can we come together to improve the little areas that we see that may be problems? So, I mean, I think the, there is a budget.
Okay.
But this is more or less that this immediate sprucing that we could do, especially-
But the landscaping should be on the budget. I mean, here we-
It's not that, it's not that we don't have a budget, we do have a budget, and that's how we got together with Dave Drury, and, you know, we said, we want more money. And it was, how can we keep it down? And the point was, we, our budget really comes from when we started. We haven't really increased that budget very much in the last six years. And the problem is, back then, we were empty, we didn't have events in the park, we didn't have mooring fields, we didn't have boats, we didn't have all these things. We have them now. And so, it was more of a discussion of, we're, we're working on that with him, and he's been great with us, and, you know, moving, we're, that stuff we are moving forward with. These were, these things are improvements that will fall in line with that. And the landscaping budget here is not as much about improvement, it was more about increasing in our budget, so I was kind of surprised that was here. And it's not over above what we're, what we're paying for now, it was a different approach to it. So, it's just two different-
Frank?
We got a one-time request for this Vietnam Wall. In my other, like, my newspaper, when I was working for, sent me to Vietnam. It's hell, those guys put up with over there. And I'd like to see some sort of commitment out of this thirty-some thousand that we got, to go to that program for one year. That's my feeling. I think we owe it to the veterans. See what you can do. Thank you.
I would support that.
And I, and I as well, what I would suggest is that we take a dollar amount from the thirty thousand, and whatever it might be, maybe five thousand, something like that, and add that to the ten that we already have in-kind, and then go to the county and see if we can get, convince them to give us another fifteen thousand dollars to match.
To match.
I can support that.
But I would, I would suggest, thinking, before you said the five thousand, that that would be something we could live with right now.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the number I had in my mind.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
I didn't make a motion. But I, I, Bill, if you, you-
I'd like to add something if I-
Sure, please come to the podium.
Okay.
Thank you. He touched on something that maybe some of you don't realize, the economic impact that that wall is going to have. It's, it's going to make Punta Gorda a destination. There is a wall not quite as nice as what we're building up in Pensacola. They get eighty to a hundred thousand visitors a year just to the wall. And that's during the off-season, Memorial Day through Veterans Day. So it's going to be a huge economic impact. So the sooner we can get this done, the sooner they'll be pouring in here. But I just wanted to touch on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
I, having been involved in the community in another way other than city council, I know full well how these things can work and the economic impact. And I applaud Mr. Goff and what he's doing. It's how we've been able to achieve so many things over the years, through all of the generosity of our community in coming together. And at this point, and I totally support the Vietnam Wall and wish that, if we were flush, that we could just write, stroke a check and say, let's get it done. Because I agree with you, it will do that. I agree with Carolyn, that we have some obligations here, that if, even if the wall, when the wall gets done, we've got some things we need to take care of. So whether it's five thousand today, or whatever it is, I don't know that we know what the number is. But until we can really get things more, you know, I don't know.
I think we need to, if, we need to try to agree on a number, to go to the county commission, to get, ask them for the approval. And, and that's where we need to be today, so.
So the, so the plan is, is that we need to ask them, if we wish to donate five thousand dollars to the Vietnam Wall, we need to have approval from the county to even give them the money from the CRA funds.
Yes.
And then in addition, ask them to kick in fifteen thousand, because we already committed ten thousand in-kind.
We could do that?
My motion.
Okay, that's a motion.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to ask the county for five thousand out of the CRA funds, and also ask for a match. We have a question.
Well, this is just a comment. I would think it would be good for us to also have staff assure that the things we need to get done can get done.
Well, they'll come back with a phased approach, I believe, on these items that we've identified that we like.
I understand, but I'm just saying, it would be good for us, as a, a good business decision, that we can, we can achieve what we need to achieve now and still do this.
They're, they're shaking their heads.
Our responsibilities.
Yes. We're, we're taking care of our responsibilities.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. So, the staff will come back with a phased approach.
We're going to come back with the other items. So we, we're going to request the county CRA funds, five thousand. And what are we asking the county to contribute?
Matching our in-kind.
Matching, matching funds of fifteen thousand.
To include our in-kind.
And I would also like to comment, I think that the in-kind that's shown here is probably low, because I know that Dennis Murphy spent his considerable amount of time working with the team in this design.
So maybe we could get the in-kind up to twenty?
Well, the ten thousand is what we know of now.
Yes.
You know, by the time we're done, I don't-
Well, and truly, from what we've already heard today, once they purchase this granite, they may not need that much more funding to make this thing happen. If we have contractors, and we have Home Depot, and we have other partners that are going to come and help with the materials and, and that, it could be a minimal amount left needed to make this thing doable. So I think, I think the granite purchase would really be important.
What I'm hearing today, the five from the city and the potential of fifteen from the county, gets the granite awarded. Would that be correct?
Yes, I think after this next week, weekend, and what we're going on today, we'll have the eighty-five thousand, if we can get that from the city and the county.
Thank you, Ray.
We can just go out and get it done.
Thank you.
I think that would be excellent.
Okay, we will bring back to you a, we'll drop the letter for, for the mayor's to sign, and then we'll come back with a plan here. I do have one question. Did we get six more liverboards in the last two days?
Come to the, come to the microphone, so you can be recorded, thank you.
In the last week to ten days, we've gotten three more. And like I said, if today was November first, we've got people coming in. We just got people that are waiting for us to commit, and we're afraid to commit.
Hang on. So do we, how many liverboards?
We have ten, as of today.
How many do we have?
Ten.
Okay.
Should we include in the sales tax a new marina?
No, no, no. All right, Tom.
Okay, this, I think this is the longest CRA meeting we've had.
We had a couple really short ones.
We're making, we're making everybody work for us, I think.
Yes. I think we're, we're done. And then we'll be hearing this again when we get the list dialed down, and we get a better idea of staff and conversation and plan.
I'd just like to say, you know, when you were looking at this number, guys, you know, and Howard mentioned it, half the stuff on here is, really has, just to do with our budget, not the CRA. The stuff that we came to you for is not the landscaping, should not be the maintenance of the docks, or, I mean, that's, that's budget, that's, you know, has to be done. What we came to you for was, you know, the storage shed, you know, the landscaping, you know, improvements in landscaping, like a statue and getting a plan, but we can do that with Dave.
Yes, Ray.
Thank you. At the risk, at the risk of being taken off the schedule, I have a simple question. At the marina, money is generated from slips. And we have slips, we call them zero slips. There's no electric, there's no water, we put in cleats and davits, and we tie up small boats up to twenty-five foot that don't require water and electric. We've had full-timers on these slips. They keep their boat there, they're full-time- They keep their boat there, they're full-timers in boating, but they're not liveabords. In the last several weeks or months, we received a letter saying we can only utilize those zero docks on weekends, we can't rent them for more than two days. In turn, we have 25-foot boats that are now in 50-foot slips because they have contracts. Just a thought or a consideration on how we can make these slips functional, because now people come in to go to the restaurant, then they feel like they're free ties, and they're up the front of the Marina.
That's probably the city.
Okay, and again, if I'm off the schedule, I know I outspoken, I apologize, but it's something that's beneficial from where we stand as far as renting slips, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Why is, excuse me, why is...
Don't go away, Art.
Howard, why is that?
Do you want to respond?
That's what we asked for. I mean, these were day, these were intended to be day docks to facilitate transient use and make sure there were enough transient slips available for people to come in to use the Marina facilities, the park, the crab house, and, and so that's what we asked for, that's what we got permission for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have citizens' comments. Citizens' comments, please come to the podium, state your name. We have three minutes.
Murray Goldberg, City Punta Gorda, not to belabor the point, but I do absolutely agree with the need to maintain the landscaping at the Marina and at the Vietnam Wall and that whole area. Punta Gorda is such a, has such a wonderful and strong history of volunteerism, maybe we want to consider asking groups like the Green Thumbs, who have done such a phenomenal job at History Park, if they want to be involved and get, do recognition for helping maintain the landscaping at the Marina and at the Vietnam Mall. Thank you.
Yes, because we even have the group...
Master gardeners as well, you know, a number of groups like that. We should take advantage of that, I'm sure they'd be very well in help.
Thank you. Citizens' comments? Commissioner?
One thing?
Okay, go ahead.
We just got 10 hours of crane service to help erect the wall.
Nice.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll go with Carolyn.
Nothing more now.
Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
No?
No.
No, thank you.
No.
Great, it's good to see you all.
We are adjourned. We will take a, how many, five? Six-minute break, it's 10:54, we'll resume at 11 o'clock. That's the longest CRA meeting.